Hello and welcome to this Sunbury American presentation of the February 12th, 2024 Sunbury City Council Meeting. This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Public comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching. Please smash the like button and leave a comment. It really helps the algorithm. If you haven't already, please subscribe to the channel and hit the notification bell to get all the upcoming videos from our channel. Thank you and enjoy the video.
So I call this a big order. Please stand for the Fudge Allegiance. Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call, please. Brochus, here. Rechner. Ister. Barnhart. Martina. Prior to tonight's council meeting, there was an executive session held to discuss personnel. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? Alright, moving on. The approval of minutes reports. Minutes from the January 8th and 22nd meetings. Reports from the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, code office, health department, parsonage, and planning commission. Do I have a second to accept those minutes and reports? Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yeah.
Brochus. Yes. Moving on to old business, Councilman Barnhart.
I'd like to reaffirm Resolution 2023-17. City of Sunbury exemptions for commercial property inspections. Because there were some questions, so I'd like to clarify them. In the interest of full transparency and to promote the understanding of reasons for exemptions granted relative to the City of Sunbury Commercial Property Inspection Ordinance, the City Council of City of Sunbury voted to allow exemptions to said ordinance as follows. For properties inspected under the residential rental ordinance. For properties having undergone structural inspections within the preceding three years. For government properties. For properties which are uninhabited and either under agreement of sale for a period of not to exceed six months or are scheduled for remodel construction to be completed within a period of one year and all have the whole permits therefore have been obtained. That doesn't mean you can get a house and it's, you had to say, "I'm on sale," and then five months, and then you go, "Wait, I'm not gonna sell it." And then say, "Oh, I'm gonna sell it," so you get six months. You have six months from the time it goes up that you put it for sale. And your permit to do construction, that doesn't mean it's an open permit. You have one year, and this was enacted March 27th, 2023. So you have until March, end of March of this year, to schedule inspection. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Mr. Backer, AARP grant.
So we talked about the AARP grant, I believe it was last meeting. And I asked council to look into what kind of projects they would like to, you know, apply for this. So I'm wondering if, I'm hoping council thought about it and looked into it and what you really would like to see done. Yeah, this is more, it has to be community-based. Most, I believe they said it was eighty, eighty percent were under twenty thousand. So we're talking, you know, sidewalks, things that benefit the community as a whole. Not really so much just something for us, because obviously it's like a government building type deal. It's not really something that they'd be into, just something that they would focus on ADA accessibility. They've looked at, and obviously you have in front of you other ones that have gone in. They've done libraries, they've done benches, they have done sidewalks, things of that nature.
I mean, Jerry, so right now, do we need to say what we want to apply for?
Well, I-
Is that what, is I looking for?
I am, but I don't know. I'll be honest, I know we're probably gonna end up going for something, because we're not just gonna leave this on the table.
Yeah, for sure.
We're gonna go for something. I believe there's still a little time if he needs table this. Yeah, maybe we can stick to April. So I mean, we do have time if he needs table this, that's just-
I mean, being the amount that it is and asking beneficial, I mean, I know Councilman Barnhart's talked about it in the past. I mean, I think more benches and trashcan receptacles, you know, down on the river, especially on the riverside. Obviously, we know a flood, so we may have to remove them at times. But I think that'd be a good drawdown, just try to get people down, because that's not really a lot of stuff down or adding more. Especially with trashcans and receptacles. I'm a mean person that hate litter, so, you know, I think that'd be good to help, you know, with our downtown. Even on both sides of the wall, you know, up at the complex, more trashcans. Steve's not here, I know he's gonna hate the end of him, but, you know.
That's why you talk about it.
That's right, you just add that to the loop. So that's, I mean, another thing, I think some quick things that we could get. I believe the council wants to table it, but being the amount of money that it is there and that short beneficial, the beneficial have with those little things that we really don't have the funds for at the moment. So I don't think that's something more.
I mean, as far as if I was reading the application, sidewalks versus recycling, you can make an argument of separating it.
Two-dollar value.
As far as-
Under twenty.
You can do up to fifty. Eighty percent that they allocate are under twenty thousand. So the chance, I mean, not saying we can't get above, I mean, but-
The likelihood is less.
Less likely that it would be twenty or under.
I mean, we gotta have it figured out by April, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
Running short on time, so.
If we have, I don't know exactly how they operate as far as if you have to have all the funding in place. Or you could say, "Hey, we're gonna use this as a match to go for X-type deal," and that's satisfactory. I can try to find that answer if, you know, we want to be able. But this money in general can be used as match-up funds for other state grants and things of that nature.
So, do more research, we have some on the table, but if it can be used as matching, we can put up as matching as those things that you said. So I'll make the motion to table the AARP grant till a later date, but prior to the deadline. Do I have a second? Martina. Brochus. Yes. Rechner.
Yeah.
Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Alright, so moving on to City Hall upgrade here. So in the packet, Rocky sent over the blueprints of the layout that which everyone approved. And he also got his estimated breakdown of costs there as well. So, I mean, this was everything, obviously, there's a lot of things that we could cut out of here. He just did a general estimate there, and on the front there, he has an estimated at five hundred and twenty thousand. That includes everything that's involved with renovate, like obviously renovation costs, prevailing waves, building permits, all the different fees that may be associated with that. Obviously, some of those things would not be included, because like the one in there, I think I said about furniture. So it is given estimated breakdown. So what Rocky's asking at this point is we want to continue to proceed with this City Hall remodel. So I'm just gonna say something that took place here in City Hall in the last month of January, that many people may not be aware of. So I think it's crucial that we do this out of the safety of our employees and also the citizens. Because what happened in the month of January, myself, Mike Rhodes, and Jeff were here. We were here about the quarter or five when buildings closed, buildings off. No one's in the building. Career link's gone, only one's in the building. And Mike comes up, it's about quarter or five, and he's like, "Hey, are you meeting someone here? Someone just came out of the basement." We're like, "We're not meeting anybody, we're not meeting anybody." So we go confront this individual, and we're like, "Hey, what are you doing here? What are you doing here? Couldn't give us an answer? What's going on here?" So long story short, we believe this individual may have been spending time in the basement after City Hall hours were closed. Because as we're cleaning out City Hall, the basement, Jeff found some suitcase down there full of stuff that obviously we got rid of. And after we confronted this individual, told him to leave, about five, ten minutes later, after we left, one of us had three of the four-part car tires sliced. And then that same individual later that night went up to Lewisburg, broke into someone's house, and now he's sitting in jail. So that was just one, that was just one occurrence. Another, about a week later, again, so since then, we secured the basement, secured everything. We come in a week later, during after the weekend, basement doors are wide open, conference doors wide open, over the weekend, and there was no one here. So this remodel has to happen for the safety of our employees and also the vital information that goes through this building. Like, for example, like, we cannot have a private conversation anywhere in a building because of walls are hollow and you can hear through every single wall. So I think this remodel has to happen for the security of our employees and also the information that flows through these walls. So I, like I said, I'm all favor and pushing this, continuing it throughout to the entire end. Mr. Redd.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add to that? Not only for our city employees, but I'm also looking at the safety of our citizens. Especially on a night like tonight, if we would have somebody that's in violation, that's hiding in our basement, purposely knowing that's a council meeting, come up here, who knows what could happen with it? Mass, mass casualty, or whatever it could be. It's protection for everybody, just not the employees, it's for the citizens of the Sunbury, also that come to this building.
Yes, so I know Rocky, go ahead.
I got a question, Michael.
Yes, sir.
The comment you just made, the gentleman's in the basement, the doors weren't locked.
Unfortunately.
I see the doors weren't locked in the basement, am I correct?
That's correct, sir.
So that means after remodeling's all done, if you don't lock the doors in the basement, then you can back down.
Well, since then, that has been corrected, all the locks, everything has been locked and secured.
Well, that's my point, now it's secured, there's no problem.
That's with the basement. Now it goes into the bigger issue of how you can hear through the walls. Like, for example, if we're having an executive session, it has to do with personnel litigation. Like, if you're sitting out, if you're in the hallway or outside on the sidewalk, you can hear our conversation. There's nothing secretive about it.
And also, Councilman, please, sir, I respect what you just said, and that is well respected. But also, with this upgrade, cameras are also included, so now we're gonna have a third eye looking at these areas that we might be able to hit somebody that's potentially invading these areas where they shouldn't.
Well, that's true, I've just been working on the cameras, and the cameras have nothing to do with the remodeling, okay? And you mentioned about the situation this evening, us sitting in council chambers, and the doors are open, anybody walk through the door right now. Has nothing to do with the basement, hiding in the building.
But it's being proactive with the cameras, so-
Cameras, I didn't see nothing.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just talking about the remodel and general lack bits and pieces, I'm saying all these things are in the remodel.
We're spending half a million dollars because-
So you, go ahead, sorry.
So I can't hear through the walls, I either was-
Well, you, I mean, so you think it's very important that our government information, that when we're on the phone with people, that people can hear through the walls, hearing our information, or if someone's talking about permits or banking statements, whoever, with the different offices, it's professional that they can be heard?
I didn't say that.
Well, that's the thing, that's why it needs to be fixed.
So this isn't depending on how-
I understand that. I'm not disagreeing with that.
But it's half a million dollars, it's back there, it's money.
I'm not disagreeing with that at all. But it's also gonna be a heck of a lot more if information is leaked and it's found out about, and then we knew about it and did nothing about it. So like I said, I'm in favor of this for all the reasons that I listed. I can't, this is, I can't speak about it for council, but this is something that has to happen. I mean, this building, the last, I mean, putting a coat of paint on it isn't upgrading anything, it's putting lipstick on a pig. This building needs to be updated, so.
I have a question. Is there any kind of like, in there, like, for employees to have like a scan to come in?
That's part of, that's like the part of like the door upgrades and things like that. I mean, that's what they do at the police department, it's a fob in, fob out, every single office, every single door, so you know when people are coming and going, and that keys are just left out to anyone, right? No, go ahead, no.
No, are you looking at us to say, "Okay, we'll do this and commit to this amount of money"?
No, we're not gonna-
Are you saying, "We're gonna start here and we wanna commit to the remodel, and we'll do it as we can do it"?
Yes.
Although we'll take each step as we can.
Yeah, like, this isn't to say we're gonna commit to doing this for the five hundred and twenty thousand. Say, "All right, Rocky, we wanna continue with the next process."
We just wanna take the next step.
Yes, and then when we actually get to the point of going out for, like, for example, in here, it says here, "We're moving two bathrooms to different locations, they have running, just running plumbing, twenty-five thousand dollars." I think, I know everything is expensive, us running plumbing, like piping work, I don't see that being twenty-five thousand dollars. So I think a lot of this can be cut, like we do with the police department, you know, one for the bells and whistles, maybe we don't need the bells and whistles. So this is just, I'm looking for a motion, just to continue the process.
Just not, you're not asking us to say, "Okay, I agree to this amount"?
No.
We just wanna take the next steps to do.
Yes, to get with Rocky and say, "All right, what's the next step to keep the ball rolling until we get to that point? All right, now it's time to figure it out, and we're not doing that." Correct, yes. Alright, so is there any questions on the plans that set in place or any, I mean, there's a breakdown of the fees? Any questions?
I think on these plans, I'm sure there should be some modifications, but it just isn't locked, it's not just-
Well, no, but this is where everyone agreed upon already, and-
I didn't agree upon it.
Well, too bad you don't have a vote. I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
Should have an office.
Well, you know what, you and Kevin can share a desk. Well, we can put a desk on there, we didn't worry about furniture. Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
How about the city administration?
His office is there, they just got named it wrong. It's still there. Yes, Rick?
This is just to continue with the process, this isn't committing to any money to him.
That is, that is correct, it's just to continue the process, not a commitment to any type of a dollar amount.
Okay.
Alright, but Jim, do you have an issue with the current plan that has been set forth, that everyone had input upon? Once upon input.
Well, when you were the code officer, okay?
Yes.
The doorway's on the other side, you move the doorway from one side to the other side, and the outcome is the same. What did you benefit by spending that money there?
Well, we don't have to move the door, it's just the way they got the heat, that's the way you move the door, I don't know why, but we don't have to move the door. See, that's one of those things that we can change to save money.
Thank you.
See, like I said, we're not committing anything, it's just to say we're gonna do-
Here's a hundred thousand to save, but they're probably-
Alright, hey, whatever the difference is, we'll take it out of the building, since that's your department.
Is there a need for three offices and then a staff office?
Well, there is no need, it's just like I spoke with Councilman Barnhart and Mike Rhodes, and with the space they have in their area, that's what they chose, wanted to go with. Now, I can't speak for why they want that, because they're the ones who work out of that office, I can't speak for that.
I don't know what Spank is one of.
That's okay, you got an office now. You got an office.
Well, sometimes, you know, there's a need and there's one.
Right.
I don't mind about if there's needs for the safety of cameras, like you mentioned, locked in with the fobs. That's all safety, but just to take and dress the pickup for another couple, quarter of a million dollars.
Well, no, it's not about dressing the pickup, it's about doing it right the first time, so we don't have to do it over. Because the longer we wait, the worse it's going to get. There's a lot of other examples that we could use here, that things are getting worse and they're not getting fixed, so.
And this ain't in stone either, Jim, because there's some things on here that I-
So let's make, okay, I'll make the motion to continue with the process, not to agreeing on any dollar amount, but just agreeing on the process. Do I have a second? Rechner.
Yeah.
Ister.
Just to continue just looking at it.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Alright, we did this, I put on the, I added it to the agenda back in January, but I forgot to actually vote on it. But we need to make an official vote of accepting the resignation of Officer Keith Camberley as of December 31st, 2023. Do I have a second? Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Rechner.
Yeah.
Ister, please. Alright, moving on to new business, proposed emergency procedure and pay policy. Mr. Alex, you created this, so I'll let you speak about it.
Well, I think it's just an updated version of what needs to be for the city. We have it all, pardon me. I have to address any questions.
Well, I have a question. So did you create this, or did you take it from someplace? Okay, so I'm confused on point A, because it says, "We have a full closing authorization. We're authorizing to close during a state of emergency that you listed above." It said, "Employees who are in non-essential positions will be authorized to be absent from work." So we're telling them not to come into work because there's a state of emergency. Then the next sentence, you say, "Such employees will need to use their free time of vacation, personal time, or comp time." So we're telling them to stay home, and then we're telling them to take their time off. So why are we telling, so we're telling, we're telling you to stay home, and we're saying, "Hey, you need to use sick time also, or personal time."
Because you're not getting any of these essential employees that are staying.
So why don't we just say everybody's essential, then we just never close no matter what? Because I just think it's ridiculous that, you know, this, that we're not gonna close like for tomorrow. The state already has a three-hour delay on, Career Link has a three-hour delay on across the state. But we're gonna say, "Nope, sorry, we're coming in on time, because someone may come in and wanna do something." And what if someone says, you know, like, you said you can make it your decision to call off or not call off, which is fine. So I'm gonna use the code office for it here. What if everyone in the code office says, "You know what, we don't feel safe, we're all gonna take vacation time and not come into work." So now the office is not open, there's no saying if it is or isn't open. So I just think it's very open policy, I think it's either we are or we aren't.
Well, they, they just, because you want the office, you need your allow to take on. That would be a council, that would be his decision whether you get vacation or not.
So if someone says they don't feel safe coming to work because of the snow, which has an example, so that's gonna have snow tomorrow. We're gonna say, "Nope, sorry, we're still coming in"? But that's what we're gonna tell them, though. If you said it's up to the councilperson to decide. I just don't understand, like, if you see, like, for example, the state is having a three-hour delay. The Career Link's having a three-hour delay. Like, you know the snow is coming, you know it's gonna be bad. Like, I just don't understand, like, we don't care about the safety of our citizens and employees to make sure that it's safe? That's just my opinion, it's up to council if they choose to adopt it or not, but I just don't think it's right. Like, look out for our employees. Like, if we can't care about our own employees, how can we care about our citizens?
We're probably not gonna make it to so much.
I understand that, but, you know, if we, it's about safety.
The school closure?
I'm getting a call right now, I can't tell you. I can pick it up if you want me to.
Oh, we know they're gonna be closing, but they make it up.
Okay, so if you wanna tell our employees we need to make it up, we can tell them that. I don't know, Spank, you're telling them we need to, you don't have to come in, we're gonna tell them you gotta take your time.
Well, they wanna get paid to help take your time.
But, like, it goes back, Joel, let me ask you a question. If someone gets hurt coming into work, or gets hurt walking into sidewalks or whatever, are we liable and are we responsible?
On the way to work, no.
Okay, what about when they get here? Because you know-
If they, if they're working, yes. Workings comp, like, yeah.
Okay, so Spank, let me ask you a question. You're gonna come in here tomorrow at eight o'clock and help shovel snow or help plow parking lots?
I believe that's the street blues job this year.
Yeah, but also it's about helping out. Like, last time, Carl said, "Hey, he needed help." So what did I do? I came down, jumped in a plow, and helped plow parking lots because he needed help. I mean, so we're gonna tell our employees that, "Hey, whatever, but you still need to do your job, but we're not gonna do our part to help." Okay, well, like I said, I'm totally against it, this is my own opinion, I'm not saying it's right, but I'm against it, I can't speak for anybody else.
Excuse me, why can't you work towards having people work at home when there's an emergency such as that?
I mean, we do have a policy where people can work at home.
Well, they don't give them the equipment to take home to work at home.
Why not? Other people do.
I know, I know a lot of people do have laptops, I don't know who does and who does not, but I'd be happy to look into that, but Lisa, you had something.
This is gonna be a whole handbook change, so if we agree that we wanna look into changing this, then I think we open the whole handbook and make the changes all on time instead of looking and choosing and piecing them together.
Alright.
So if it's something we wanna do, we think we should look at this and change it, and I think we just open the whole thing and go from there. That way, we can go through and start wherever it needs to be started.
Oh, I'm okay with that, if you wanna open the whole handbook.
I just need to remember that we might as well do it.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
Another thing you might wanna look at is if I need to differ between essential and non-essential. Because for, you know, if the Department of Public Safety, you think they would be essential during an emergency.
Yeah, so I kinda go back to Lisa, say, opening up the whole entire handbook and reviewing it again.
Yeah, and the option would be, if you get them an option, if they choose to come to work or not come to work, of keeping their time, it takes you not to commit. And there is a difference between closing early or closing and sending them home. Once they're here to work and you send them home, that's on the employer or however you want to do it. But we do not commit is a decision by the employee.
Agreed, so do we wanna vote on this? Do we wanna table it to the whole handbook? So what does council want to do?
Looks like the table had to explore it a little bit more.
I think that's the thing to do.
That's fine, go ahead, Rick.
There's something else, get it to me, just, uh, uh, to design your essential and non-essential employees. And then for the non-essential employees, there has to be you. The thing is, if you get them off and make essential employees come in, I ask their job, but they are forced to work. Regardless, if they choose not to come in when it's snowed there, they don't get paid. Because they're considered essential employees. And the general word is, you either gotta give them overtime for working or use, employees have to use their own leaves if they choose not to come to work.
How do you split that up with the other, because the secretaries are inside.
If, if you were a state or federal agency, it is that, you have so many agreements filed because of special discrimination, as much as they call out, "Oh, I can't get to work." But you're treating some people differently than you are others, just because of how you name it and stuff like that, but, you would get a lot of, even civil service would have a problem with that, I believe.
So what we do, we can table it, table it till a later day. Alright, I'll make the motion to table the policy to review the entire handbook, so we got a second.
A second.
Questions?
Yes, sir!
But if we get this spread out before that, we're not gonna wait till we go through the whole handbook.
Well, we kinda gotta go through the whole handbook, because this is a piece of the handbook, so therefore, the handbook would-
But it'd be the first thing we start with, to start working on the handbook, if that's what we wanna start. But if we're gonna open it, we need to open it and get it all cleaned up.
If there's other items to be addressed, fine.
Correct.
Until we get this done, it'd be next year.
Would be.
Well, you know, go take the handbook home, it's interesting reading material.
There's a test next week, by the way.
Trust me, I wrote it, so I know what's in it.
You didn't write the whole handbook.
I reviewed every single policy.
It's involved making the policy.
I definitely forgot, this one, obviously. Alright, so I'll make the motion to table this policy and procedure to review the handbook, do I have a second?
I did say.
John's second, oh, sorry.
Again.
Sorry. Martina.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Rechner.
Yeah.
Ister.
Yes.
But I do think we need to like start it sooner.
Jeff, go ahead.
I'll get you copies, I have a copy.
Get everybody copies.
I'll send you copies.
Alright, moving on, I make the motion to accept Lisa Kleeger to the planning commission board as of an appointment. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Rechner.
Yeah.
Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Moving on, accepting the resignation of Councilman Rick Rechner as of February 25th, 2024. That'll be the Sunday prior to the next council meeting. Do I have a second? Brochus. Yes. Correct. Ister.
No.
Barnhart.
No.
Martina.
Yes.
Joel, what does that mean?
That's not good. I rescind my no vote and vote yes.
Never mind, Joel, you know what that means now.
Lisa, you weren't supposed to, I'm not supposed to do that.
Alright.
Do you want me to rescind mine, then?
That'd be interesting. Alright, so moving on to floor mats for the police station, City Hall here at the rink. If anyone wasn't aware, that we are purchasing new floor mats for them, and also steamers to do that, clean them now in-house. We usually have someone come in and do that, now we're trying to save money and do it ourselves by getting the equipment that we need. So I'll make the motion to purchase the floor mats and the cleaning equipment for work. Do I have a second? Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes. Rechner.
Yeah.
Ister. Police equipment, chief.
Basically, what I wanted to, I looked back through, I've been just looking over different things with our budget, looking at different things in the department, things that we just haven't looked at in the past few years here that I kinda wanted to address with council and just be, have a silver lining communication with you guys. We are going to need, we're looking at hiring at least two more officers against the council, a lot of full-time officers. With that being said, we'd be looking at- With that being said, we'll be looking at, uh, purchasing, uh, two, two handguns. Um, because of the amount, I figured we'll have, I felt that we have this sort of communication with, uh, being that we're gonna have to, uh, spend approximately about seventeen hundred dollars on the two handguns. That's also with the trade-in of one of our handguns that we already have, the forty-five, when I went through the armory, there was a gun that was in there that we could just trade in as as basically, uh, in purchasing the the two new weapons. So, uh, looking for basically the the approval to go ahead and go forth with, uh, getting a little anti-tactile and getting a final report for two handguns. It'd have to be expensive, between seventeen and eighteen hundred dollars.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for chief there? All right, so I'll make the motion, uh, are you looking to purchase or to continue to, looking to purchase, correct?
Looking to purchase.
All right, uh, looking to purchase, you said two? Two handguns at the. All right, with the maximum of eighteen hundred dollars per handgun. No, no.
Total.
Oh, total, sorry. Total, total. Every time they, where you're the best, where you're the best. All right, with the total of eighteen hundred dollars, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Martina?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Blackner?
Uh, I don't think I'm not proposing, because I don't think these people want to pay to make it go. I didn't, I didn't even realize we watched eleven officers. Do we, do we want to go to eleven officers?
Well, it's budget, it's budgeted for eleven officers, we're just being proactive, so when that happens, we have, they have all the equipment ready to go. Not going out there without guns.
What happened to real happening in two years?
Well, then the gun is ready to go in two years when it's needed. We just wanna make sure it's here and ready to go from when it's, we get to that point.
You know, I, and I, my, I'm still gonna go, no, because I don't think it takes that long, if we do decide to hire the officers, that a gun can be purchased. It's not nothing that has to be ordered for seven to a year ahead or something like that.
Okay.
Hey, also, Pat, uh, Councilman Rechner, I just wanna add also, if we had an off-officer involved shooting, uh, we at that point have to take the officer's gun. So if we had three officers and, heaven forbid this would happen, but, uh, all three officers were involved in the shooting, we would have to take their duty weapons and replace them with the weapons that we have, and at this point, I only have two that I can replace.
But then then you're using, you need guns as spares. You're not using guns preparing to hire a few more officers. That's my view on it, because I don't, I don't recall voting for, to go to eleven officers.
Well, we didn't vote to go eleven officers, it's just in our budget, but it, yes, if you wanna call spares, because if we do hire two officers, we still need to have two on hold if an incident like that would happen, we're just trying to be proactive so we don't send our officers after without weapons. Go ahead.
All right.
All right, so, I mean, disparate records, is that still a no vote?
No, I'm not voting yes, uh, for spares, but like I said, that, uh, there's, there's, I, I mean, at this point in time, I don't see using them, uh, using, I won't say a protest, but using the thing that we're getting them for, to recruit new officers when we get them, that's because nothing's been discussed about putting them on. If you need a spare gun or something like that, that's a different story.
Ister?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
All right, moving on, uh, the COVID nineteen, we're gonna put that down to discussion, uh, for Mr. Backer. Uh, next one, so Mr. Backer, resolution twenty-four oh oh two.
Uh, to close out our Viking vesting audit grant, um, we have to pass a resolution that you accept the final report, which I'll receive the month of, month of, at this point, so I'm just looking for a vote for that resolution twenty-four zero zero two.
Second.
Blackner?
Yeah.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
All right, uh, Rick, do you care if I do the, oh, no, I'm sorry, Councilman Ister, you're up.
Right. Uh, cleaning person, Kitty Wojcicki, we're gonna be hiring her for fifteen dollars an hour for sixteen hours a week. We do city hall, also the police department. Uh, this being upfront, it's Jeff's daughter, we look high and low, we try getting a service in town here, which never really comes through three times. Okay, look, look, we're number-wise, we're saving money, and when it comes to, uh, just working with her hand and foot, I had a thought, you being here, absolutely, we're including with her, so that said.
I just wanna say that Jeff will not be her boss, that following her, Councilman Ister, and also with Carl, so I just wanna make sure that everyone's aware of that.
The only thing happens is if she does a show for work, he can.
That's right. Go ahead.
So, uh, is there any questions in that? I'll make that.
Second.
Rechner?
Yeah.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Uh, Rick, do you want me to do the invoices and vouchers for you?
Yeah, you went through, I don't have the numbers.
That's fine. So the approval of vouchers and invoices from the general fund of a hundred, one hundred thirty thousand, three hundred seventy-two and thirty-six cents, liquid fuels of one thousand five hundred eighty-one and twenty-eight cents, private grants of thirty-one thousand, eleven ninety-eight cents, and payroll of sixty-two thousand, one hundred forty and forty-four cents. Do I have a second?
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Blackner?
Yeah.
Ister?
Yes.
Uh, moving on to discussion.
I was serious when I said, if you even come in and clean, we discussed this, that cleaning would be on his own time, not on city time. So in other words, if his daughter's sick, he's coming in, he's going through due days, out of work, because there are problems with the prior meeting. So he won't.
Double the time, I understand.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well, we know some of it is all around.
Yeah, Joel.
I see it, I call it out, I see it.
All right, uh, moving on to discussion, Mr. Backer, COVID nineteen.
Um, so, uh, there's a new grant out there that's through our fund that's for, uh, maybe for purpose, we did a facility program grant. Um, so, basically, we can use that for our facilities, we can use that for equipment, um, and there's no math required. Um, so, uh, since that's a new one, I wanted to present that to you guys because really, it covers, obviously, a lot of things that a lot of other grants don't cover for us, uh, which is equipment and facility upgrades. So please think about it.
Questions, anyone on that one?
Or we can discuss it.
I mean, I think for facility upgrades, I think, I think it'd be a great thing for the pool, the rink, the OPG, getting equipment for everybody. Riverfront.
I forgot to mention, it's a minimum two hundred fifty thousand.
We can get Steve a new street sweeper.
Yes, yes, we could.
And that actually is something that, uh, I know you said is needed, and quite honestly, it's not covered under any other grants.
So, the rink does need to move some, I hate to waste another dollar on it.
Tell Stevie to stop the streets. You can break him that, dude.
There is another grant you can apply for that sweeper.
There you go. All right. So, I mean, we can look into more stuff.
Recycling grant.
Yes, I said no.
Yeah, you can do that.
I said no.
Derek, do you know when the, when's the deadline for this grant?
Uh, it was, it's.
Oh, it gives us an idea how much time we have to prepare.
April twentieth, down, all right.
All right.
So, clarification, this is April, the other one, uh, A, RP is March.
Okay.
It's April twentieth, the other one's March sixth, either one, either way, we still kind of agree.
Okay, awesome. All right, anything else on that, anyone? All right, uh, Councilman Barnhart, uh, code enforcement update?
Yes, uh, I'd like to have a new mission here. Over here, the Sunbury Code Enforcement Department provides the services necessary to ensure a clean, safe environment for the citizens, businesses for the city of Sunbury, and provide assistance for the Sunbury Police Department and non-moving traffic violations and enforce city ordinance violations. The Sunbury Police Department will assist the Code Enforcement Department with the more dangerous and problematic properties, as safety is our mission. The partnership between the Sunbury Police Department and the Sunbury Code Enforcement Department will be beneficial to the residents, businesses, and all employees of the city of Sunbury. I checked around and seen that, I didn't see anyplace else in the city, so I, we wouldn't be setting a precedence, I do believe. Uh, the chief, Chief Anon and Mike Rhodes, we sit down, and Joel, we have talked about different things that we can do legally, so, uh, chief, would you like to, you and, uh, Rhodes like to amplify on what we were talking about?
Yeah, uh, we had spoke about, uh, we had meeting, uh, over here together, John, I saw your mic. Um, I thought it would be beneficial for codes, uh, and for us, for the police department, to basically start working with codes a little more, um, and having code officers with us, uh, they actually, uh, were involved in one of our trainings just recently. Uh, we had them training with us, all of them were with us, uh, at this most recent training that we had. Uh, in doing this, what I'm looking to do is, I'm looking to put code officers in our police vehicles, um, on certain days a week, maybe once, twice a week. Um, and, and starting out, probably once a week. And what they would do is go along with us, see what we're doing, um, and then also help us, when they're on patrol or when they're out looking for different ordinance violations, they can also assist us with parking tickets, um, if they were given the up-safety handles. Um, they could also issue the city ordinance violations. Um, we then, in return, would go with them once a week, also, sub-site four hours with one of our officers, and hit the more, uh, the dangerous, uh, areas that they have, that they feel that they would like to place presence, uh, when they go to check a house for for certain things, or they just want a police officer with them. So, us working together, um, it looks good, and I think it's going to be beneficial to both departments. Um, in going forward, I think that, uh, code will be able to assist the police department in some of the minor things that we have going on on the streets, and also help with the parking tickets. Uh, there's some other things we're running over tonight as well, um, that it would be beneficial for, so, it's just us coming together, better communications, and working together.
Bottom line, it's just a, it's just a safety for both departments, really. Um, we have knowledge, or we, we have instruments that can help us with a certain situation, that a police department has knowledge with certain tools that helps us. So we just wanna work together, like I said, bottom line is, uh, safety for all. Um, not having to take time to research something when another department already has it at their hands. Cross-training, as, as Pete Rehman said, cross-training with each other, uh, hard computer program, getting the cross-training down, some of their tactical training we are receiving, so it's a win-win situation for both departments. And, uh, we're all excited about the partnership that we are establishing, uh, with each department and, uh, looking forward to a wider future, again, for the safety of the citizens of Sunbury.
This is, this this will benefit, uh, benefit everybody, so, we can work, I know there's ordinances that will probably have to be written policies, but I mean, it isn't gonna happen overnight, but I think.
It's a step in the right direction.
Yes, yes, I believe this is, this will benefit Sunbury.
Any question, any one of the things they spoke about?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, moving on, Councilman Ister?
Yes, uh, for upgrades, our, uh, back, uh, conference room is used, of course, by the code officers, and of course, our, uh, construction meetings, so we wanna take it, get a TV in there that we can project in neighborhoods where we're working, like Siskiyou Avenue, and it's gonna be Pataco Street. Code officers do have RZO meetings and so forth, uh, when we sit there discussing property X, you can bring it up and visually look at it off of Google or everything so forth, so, uh, I don't know any dollar figures yet, uh, how many TVs that.
Yeah, I mean, we're saying.
How many are we getting here?
I said, I said fifty-five inch.
Oh, come on, let's go seventy-five.
Well.
Compromising middle.
Let's do eighty-five, we're gonna do it, do it right the first time, so everyone can see it.
TVs are pretty cheap, uh, uh, fi- uh, fifty-five, sixty-five, you're talking about four hundred, tops, five hundred bucks, and that's, that's a serious. So, so, it, you're talking the ballpark in that there, and then, uh, I have to check the basement, see if we have HDMI cables, but if not, you're talking, since we need one that's probably longer in the range of.
Are you gonna use this as with your laptop, or can you use it and a projector?
So, my thought was the laptop, so you just had everything up on there. I mean, we can use it for our, uh, voided property meetings, we can use this for, like, Jim said, all of our, um, our, uh, project meetings, and it would be extremely helpful. Honestly, the projector is a little funky and it doesn't work great.
It's about getting modern.
And it, uh, and actually, a TV and HDMI is a lot cheaper than a good projector.
Go ahead, Rick.
Uh, okay, I have a question, I agree with that, but more can be done with this. It can be used for your weather dollars, it can be used for training as well, and and a year and a half or two years ago, there was a system that was gotten from the state that I thought was going to go in there for this purpose. Instead, it went down to public works for whatever reason I don't know. But discussion at that time, Jim and you were part of the discussion, that if this state down there, when this stuff was needed, the money would come from the public works fund, to paperwork.
Spank agrees with that.
I'm not, I'm.
I don't know what Steve does.
We gotta look at the water to look down there to first place, because here, here you would have managed to, with our meeting here and all that other stuff, and and had to, but instead, it went down to public works, where nobody really knows what it's being used for. Yeah, right, well, that's what I'm saying, so, but, I mean, there we were, we had the whole setup we needed for basically nothing. Now, now we're going to go up by it, where are, where are you?
I mean, like I said, we can look into it, get an official vote for next meeting, but.
Uh, quick question, do you just wanna look for that, meeting room, do you want to look at one up here when we have presentations?
Thank you. If we're gonna do it, do it right, look for new baby. Seventy-fives.
No, something like that, something like that can be used for training, uninterrupted training, of JCP's training.
Exactly.
Everybody else, the weather dollars and stuff, it can be used for meetings with, like, school meetings and stuff like that, that doesn't involve the public.
For sure, for sure. Yes, let's look up for down in conference room and also up here, seventy-fivers, so it doesn't look, so it doesn't look like a little tiny iPad on the wall.
No, but I would bet you wanna read for fifty-five, fifty-five, if you're, if you're, for, for your hair.
Yeah, awesome. Thanks, Rick. Uh, moving on here, so, facility fees, I know Councilman Ister and I have been discussing this, had some agreements, some disagreements. We wanna get all council input on facility fees, so, Councilman Ister, like, who start?
These are courtesy votes.
Last thing we discussed, we're all looking at homework on that, you know, should we show, and so forth, that we do, we get criticized, we don't, we get criticized. Some people, uh, of course, last meeting said that about, uh, fees, of course, they were never charging those fees, and nobody else was either, then we were. So what do we wanna do?
I mean, my own personal opinion is, if they, if they're just using that facility, I think there should be no fee. But if you're asking for items like garbage bags, trash cans, picnic tables, whatever, spiders, that, it's gonna cost, it's gonna take manpower, time to get you, get these things and get them back, I think there should be some type of fee out there to compensate that time, especially if you're using garbage bags and things like that. So I just think, we'll say, I'll just use Steve, I know he likes his numbers, if if it takes Steve three hours with three guys, all right, calculate out what it will cost, or if you want a bag of garbage bags, all right, a bag of garbage bags, I don't know the same number, like, it's fifty dollars, so, all right, three hours of manpower, picked up, cleanup, and bags is a hundred dollars, all right, your fee is a hundred dollars. That's just my own opinion, I'm not saying that's right or wrong.
If they use a spider and something happens to it, who's liable for that?
They are, it falls back on the paperwork with anything that is broken, damaged, whatever.
The problem we have, John, is the pop-ups. They ruin them all the time.
I mean, with, in today's age, I don't even think we should give out pop-up because you can go to Walmart and get yourself your own pop-up. I mean, it's not like you can't find them anywhere. So I think it should be like a list of items, boom, the, as you said, the facility, that's a whole different ballgame.
And the, uh, trail is getting put together.
Yeah.
Something that we used, that we just discussed, to see if we wrote that, so, that definitely is gonna have to have a dollar value on it.
Yes.
And, uh, of course, have a list, check all this, inventory, when you pick it up, the inventory's right back.
Yeah.
And things are missing, and, uh, you mentioned garbage bags, is that gonna be for every event, even the city's events?
I mean, it's kinda like billing ourselves. It's kinda like saying, well, we're gonna, the health department's gonna bill you because we do, for the, for the concession stand, so. I mean, but hey, I'm fine with it, I don't, I think if it being used, we, we, other than obviously your own manpower, but, but that's, I mean. I mean, that's a decision that council is gonna have to make. I mean, I mean, everything costs money, nothing's free, no one will, you're tied to the city somewhere, get that for yourself.
Do you mean committees?
Yes, that's what you mean.
You mean committees?
Some committees, I know, I'm not sure what the profit was on the roof.
Kickoff.
Kickoff, thank you. I know what the profit margin is there. There are some times though, it's a smaller event, but you still need to cover the interest in this.
Yeah.
And you may not have the money to reimburse us for it.
What it goes back to is, what's good for one is good for all. You can't, you can choose this.
But when we do start thinking about really growing this in there, we also want to make sure that we're not deterring people from wanting to do something.
Yeah.
Because we do have a lot of small organizations and we want to promote that. We want to promote everything from within, we don't want to take away all the profit.
No, I mean, I think you're looking at, I mean, if someone doesn't understand, hey, listen, it costs us, we'll say fifty dollars for a bag of garbage bags. Like, they have to be understanding, like, we can't be eating everyone's cost when they're doing a, when they're doing an event, like. No, no one's gonna do that, like, you know, out of here, I would tell you, he said, you can't, not people can't say, well, you know, that, that, that food costs you twenty dollars, we only want to pay ten. Like, people have to be understanding that.
And I think everybody will, but I think we also have to be understanding and realize that we have a lot of different groups, size and economic factors. We don't want to push anybody out, we want to bring them here.
Yeah.
We have to try to find a way to-
That happy medium.
That happy medium.
And I think if they, if we show them, hey, you know, we'll do what we can to work with you, but you know, this is something that we have to get reimbursed. We can't lose money on garbage, on between garbage bags, as an example. And you know, some of those things, like, some of our workers, I mean, they're already working, it's not like they, we have to bring guys in from the weekend and say, all right, you're gonna throw these tables out, throw these garbage bags out. It's not like they're already there at work, so some of the things we could cut down on costs though.
So it's not going to work.
Would this change the insurance, and all insurance requirements that we have?
For just to recharge?
If we don't charge, would we say, say we didn't charge them a fee to have them there or whatever?
No.
They, would they still have to get the insurance?
They still have to get the insurance, yeah.
We were just talking about city events.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now you bring it outside, then you have some sort, they need liability.
Yeah, all those things, yeah.
And they do get charged for that, as we just talked.
Yeah.
We're talking in-house though.
Yeah, okay.
But at least on the doors, some local events really don't make any money.
Yeah, it's just a good thing, it's like, for example, I think it's every week or every month, like the people in the gazebo give out- free food, like, obviously we're not gonna charge that. I mean, John made one too, but I'm gonna be against it.
I just want the food.
But you know, still, if someone knows, like, the process, the same process of getting approved still is getting, that process is not changed. So people can say, oh, since it's free now, we can do whatever we want to, so I have to get approved to make sure it is available. All right, uh, moving on here, American Rescue Fund allocation. I know Mr. Backer in the paper, how we got a grant to cover engineering fees. And then we put American Rescue Funds towards that. So Jamie Kirk, you from Rome, had to allocate that money somewhere, obviously we can't vote right now, but we allocated, correct? Since it's no longer being used in that-
Needs a count.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you knew, so I acknowledged.
The Arlene, the Arlene, we got where we have, I think you said a hundred and three thousand two hundred fifty is left if we use the Arlene to cover the-
Okay, so you're gonna use your Arlene, so you're gonna be engineering it down the front street and so forth.
Yeah, so there's a hundred and three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars available that we had allocated towards that originally.
We spent twenty-two or so, it was the initial traffic study.
Yeah, but I think we had a hundred and twenty-five allocated originally, then we used the twenty-two something and the hundred and three.
That was for the original part of it. So we have a hundred and three two fifty, which does need to be reallocated to something else. You have to have your ARCA funds obligated by the end of the year, so that means under contract, right, spend money, not just you decided to do, like, just the health improvements.
Yeah.
Not just you decided to use it for city hall improvements.
You have to have it contracted, spent it. Yeah.
So yes, so those, the hundred and three two fifty should be put into a-
They, to have the time period on that.
So it has to be obligated by the end of this year and through twenty-six, suspended. So my recommendation right now is that I just don't- These are already happening.
I mean, my opinion, I know we need more money, but I also think we need money elsewhere, not to say my own opinion, it's like, Councilman Easter probably here, I think like the OPG needs work. And we don't really, we have enough money to repair the OPG. I know Derek was working with Ron to get votes, I'm getting a whole, now let's say a whole report, for example. Where they get the whole new system working, up to date, so it doesn't break down every year. I mean, if we get that, I think this would be a very good chunk of change towards what, get that OPG and working functional. Yeah, but I mean, I mean, we get street grants, I would say all the time, but we're working on street grants religiously, but you know, as Derek said earlier, like, for the one grant for, oh my gosh, you know, we just approved. But like, it's only, like, for twenty-seven thousand dollars, it's small, like, like, you know, great, twenty thousand dollars is great, but you know, we're gonna need more than twenty thousand dollars to fix the OPG and that needs fixed. And everybody loves golden.
Just the, just the main thing is, like I said, has probably five people this year. And then if for some reason you decide not to do whatever you wanted to, you don't get to re-allocate, they take it back.
Yeah, no.
So you have to know what you're doing. And it has to be under contract.
And by under contract, you mean like we were out to bid and all that stuff?
Yes, you have to have a construction contract, a security contract, it has to be obligated, it's respected. So if we put in an OPG, that's great, as long as you're bidding out and awarding OPG work this year.
Derek, as I'm right now, I'm looking at the comments, I'm waiting on, still, I don't know, Phil. Yeah, he's doing stuff, it's like, last meeting we had, we had some numbers together, we have the focus that they can be at the office.
All right, so what you're saying, and I want to take a word, so you're saying the OPG will be fully operational this summer?
Well, this is, back to the great, which is Sussman Avenue, for our concern, project, and so on, and so forth.
I get it.
And through our shortfalls in particular, everybody else, that money is really, really needed at that point. And you want Sussman or Packer, now Packers, that, that will be offered for two years, until next year, twenty-five, or six, or twenty-four, and Sussman will be starting. Those contracts will be signed, as we know, in the next three months, and the bid will be awarded and so forth, so.
I just want the OPG to open up, Rick, that's all I really want.
I appreciate that, I don't like the phone call, but where you like the phone.
We want to see you run under the straight push, is what everybody else wants to see.
Well, they have to be up and working to do that, so. Go ahead, Rick.
What's stopping you from getting the OPG?
What's he said about?
Don't, don't, don't stop me it?
There, there is problems with staffing it because of the inadequate, you have to ask Ron more details why you can't get people to work. I mean, it's just like anywhere, it's hard to get any young people to work sometimes because of the pay rate that we pay. But Ron's working on it. All right, so we can, Jamie, so we need, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Rick.
Wasn't there some kind of a program, whether it was with Sesshmane or whatever, Sesshmane, where they provided like, oh, like an internship, where they worked in those playgrounds part of the summer?
Yeah, it's kind of like a video program or something.
Yeah, like a video, but it goes back to trying to get the, trying to find teenagers or young adults to want to work. And that's, that's the tough part with everyone, right?
So they've been doing that, Rick, and the problem is they haven't really actually been getting any applicants through that, and that's been the problem, I believe for the last two or three years.
And, and, and I guess the thing I'm asking, if we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and, and the Oppenheimer don't have that stock rate, we're not fun with it anyway.
Well, what Ron does at times, so like, he has a whole lifeguard, list of lifeguards, because if that pays more, he pulls lifeguards from the, not pulls them from the pool, but go, from his list and have them, and has them work there.
And the OPG is, is something that I know, I talked to funders of that from the past, that wanted, obviously keep that open, because that's also for people that can't afford the pool. Um, they actually have someplace to go that is free, that has a water feature to cool down. And also they also think surrounding areas of Milton, they, uh, summer camps, things of that nature, always come in and utilize that, um, because it's, it's free. Um, so they have a lot of programming there as well for underprivileged kids during the summer that can afford lunches and things of that nature too. So I know it's very vital to the community as well, so we want to make sure that does keep going.
Yeah, and I, I, that's great, but I was just trying to make a point, when we put money into a camp line fast, we have, we have, we're, no further ahead, then, that's all I'm-
Jim said he'll go down there on the weekends and work it. All right, uh, moving on here, digital marquee, so in your packet, there's some different ones, there are different examples. I was talking with Councilman Barnhart about doing this, he wasn't on board with it, I got Supervisor Rhodes about getting a digital marquee out in front of City Hall. So if we could help be more advertising for what's going on here at the city, and also at the same time, how we could sell advertisement, really dirt cheap, to businesses, let them know, hey, I'm moving from these hours to these hours. And help, also help them promote their businesses as well. Now, in the packet here, you know, it has different sizes, different pricing, but I think this would be a real good thing to help, uh, break down that trick, that barrier of communication with the citizens. That way, you know, we can put on there when our meetings are, or when events are, or if people are having events, hey, give us information, we can put it on there. Or different organizations, or what they have coming up, or businesses, you know, to say what they're doing, when they're open, things like that, to try to help our businesses, to help us, you know, promote what we're trying to do. Francis?
Can you read the text, please?
Right now, we're in process, we're talking with them, see the best way how to get it out there, you know, how to launch it to the community, get people, uh, signed up for the digital footprint that it wants, that we want to have it to cover. So we're in the process of talking with them also.
Hope it's sized back.
Correct.
That, that marquee could also, uh, reduce situations.
Exactly, if City Hall's closed for snow. Yeah, Rick, go ahead.
We're talking, what kind of, you might want to, this is the reason, you know, but, but, what, what's going to City Hall? The light of, what, the, all three, uh, stoplights or business city.
Okay.
Up like yellow cat, coming off the bridge, covering on, the guy down there was making us sell advertisement on it. That way people covered in the leaves, the city will see it all the time.
Okay, we can look into that as well. But the one, the biggest cost was, I, I asked Jamie about this, about where we're paying for it from, and I had said about using American Rescue Funds, the interest portion of it. I mean, like we did for the event trailer, I think this would be a great way that we could do this for our businesses.
And it happens, and it can be monitored, it can be monitored from one computer and several pages, and that can be loaded.
Exactly, and then that way, you know, if we do sell advertisement, we're really cheap, just to cover our cost, we end up, we'd end up making that money back anyway. But this one-
Not get that, but make it a event calendar, uh, uh, if there's any emergency or anything like that. That, that's, that's a lot back, we're just gonna figure out where we're getting money from.
Yeah.
How much money do we have left, Ron?
So interest right now, all through November, available is eleven thousand seven hundred dollars, I don't have the several of them.
They're probably gonna take orders.
Yeah, I see.
Oh, we gotta get the TVs out of there.
So you're going, so the next meeting, will we be discussing what you actually want to do with that hundred and thirty thousand from, is that the tax out?
Any questions on the digital marquee? All right, moving on to police equipment and recruitment, uh, I'm gonna start off with the recruitment process of it, and then we'll turn over cheaper equipment, so we can go back. So as, uh, we put in our budget, eleven officers for this year, uh, we've been advertising for the last, even last year, uh, they get up to what we had of ten, and the applicants are not there. It's not just here, it's everybody across the state, across the nation, having issues getting police officers. So I was talking with the chief, trying to get creative about getting it, because one of the biggest holdups that municipalities have is getting, uh, candidates to have the Act one ten, the Act one twenty training. I know the chief has been working with Derek about getting, uh, grants to help fund, uh, the city, we'll say the city of Summery, to send individuals to the school for the Act one twenty. And I know we're working with that, but also at the same time, if for some reason we do not get that funding, we can't just sit here and say, oh, hopefully someone comes. We can't, we can't link them, we have to go out and get individuals. So I was talking with the chief, and he was on board with this. So right now, in twenty twenty-four, we have budgeted for eleven officers, we currently have nine. So we put in full-time budget with insurance. So what we want to do, and obviously it's a council blessing, but a Joel policy, is using those funds that we are not using right now, because we can't get applicants for, like, for the insurance and salary, to pay for, to individuals to go take their Act one twenty. So we have a number of officers that we need here in the city of Summery. Now, obviously, I'm with the chief, we spoke with this in the past, about making them sign all the contracts, and now, like I was talking to Paul, a five-year commitment to the city of Summery for us paying for that Act one twenty, Act one twenty training. So, uh, therefore we're not taking, not here for a year and then leaving. We need to start taking a proac, a proactive approach, because it's not just here in Summery or locally, it's a state issue, a national issue, that people are not becoming police officers, it's not happening. And the crimes are not going away, they're not getting lessened, as you guys can see. So this is an approach that we want to try to take to get that on, get officers here. And even by doing that, we're still ahead of the game financially with salaries and benefits, because they would not go to the academy until June, and all those things. So we're still ahead of the game, we're not putting ourselves in a hole, we're gonna come out ahead by saving money and also getting more money as well. So I would hope, I would say that's what we want to do for recruitment, is anyone against doing that.
The contract, I've done the best, all right, so it, it is an iron claw, it's not iron claw, because it's, I'm telling you, it is an applicable state. So they can put at will, we can hire them at will or fire them. That being said, we can contract a term, what we would need to do is say, if they leave, they have to pay back every dollar that was spent on their behalf. And we can even put in a, well, a clause, but we can put in a fee for funding that money, above and beyond what we paid for. So it would be pretty, uh, put it this way, I've only ever had anybody go back on this, I haven't had a, in a different facility, I mean, but it's, it's pretty persuasive. Plus, in my experience, the guys, ladies, whoever, to do it, appreciate it from the point where they don't want it. And that's just my experience, but that is another thought.
I, we have this, 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 also with the, uh, grid that Derek applied for, there's also a set of, uh, people that they would pay seventy-five percent of the tuition. Okay, how long would it be five percent of the salary, that's on top of what they, or, we didn't, was that on, aren't they part?
And I can only apply for what we were expecting to, um, any retirements or anybody leaving, so I only could apply for two, or this, and necessarily actually see that stipulation as far as, you know, we know for a fact, we only have two budgets right now, therefore we're only asking for two, or, um, to my permission. I don't see that, and to your point, I don't see any restrictions, at least from this, that would forbid us from having. A lawyer, I haven't read anything this evening.
The tutorial is seventy-five percent commission, that's what we should, we should do for, and then we say, it is seventy-five percent, we have, that's gonna be forty-five percent of the salary.
I think all numbers should be, they should be, all, uh-
Yeah, like I said, not-
Who's funding what, who's costing the city, and then you're, in that contract, if it's, and I, you might tell Bill Day, who's, uh, the graduating, graduation rate is about ninety-nine percent, so. But if somebody decides to put it way through, obviously, it's not for me, the cost to the city right now is X, and these other agencies are going to fund it. What happens if they quit? Along through the, the training, so, or then they get to the end of the placement, what do these funding sources say, back to the city, hey, you must X because they didn't graduate, they didn't take the job, what's the?
They don't graduate, we don't get seventy-five percent, we don't get forty-five percent.
Okay, thank you, so that, there, as we figured it, whose lives are for the dollar value?
So could you, Chief, you get with Joel, get him all the numbers, get that drawn up, so we can get a review, things like that. up, so we can get a review, anything like that?
Go ahead. Could I just add on a little bit? Because what I wanted to do was just so Council does have a perception of what's going on with the police department. I did do a little data analysis, uh, for two thousand forty-three, as well as, I started dating officers in the police department, so that the officers are counting, uh, for almost every second that they're working. Um, we're very busy at the police department. Um, just given the arrest tallies from last year, uh, there was four hundred and thirty-seven criminal arrests that were made out of the department, uh, four hundred and seventy-seven traffic arrests, and two hundred and seventy-three warnings that were issued. So far this year, uh, again, I started this data collection, the analysis, uh, about second week of January, so we've about, we're about a month into it. Um, currently, uh, the officers, I'm also tracking their patrol miles. Uh, the officers have logged, in that amount of time, they've logged three thousand four hundred and eighty-two miles, it's about eighty miles per day on average, that they're out of patrol. On top of that patrol, um, they basically have handled, uh, we've dispatched in that, that time period to seven hundred and ninety-six police incidents. Out of that, a hundred and thirty-nine EMS, uh, were dispatched that we pretty much don't warn, um, a lot of the times, we basically do the incidents, uh, the police incidents. So from January first to now, we've had seven hundred and ninety-six police incidents, um, covered by eight, eight police officers, nine police officers, uh, with myself. And currently, um, we had five death investigations that are being investigated, uh, twenty-three different disturbances that are processed, that are open, nineteen domestics, twenty-two mental, mental, mental health incidents, uh, one overdose death, uh, one sexual assault, um, twenty deaths, um, and about thirty-five different check of all affairs that ended up turning into something, and five child abuse cases, along with three overdoses, uh, that the police department has handled since the beginning of January. Um, so we're very, I, I will speak for every one of them, um, they're tracking very well with what I want to implement in the department, um, and again, they are, they're working hard. So far for the year, um, since January, they've had thirty criminal arrests, five felonies, forty-four misdemeanors, thirty-six summaries, thirty-seven traffics, and seventeen warrants that were issued, um, along with the investigations that I spoke about, and also investigated. With that being said, um, again, uh, there are even, you know, they started building checks, I started the building check, and if anybody's, uh, who's, who's were in the discussion here, I know we've done a lot of calls at the police department, um, they definitely want to do three building checks per night for officer. So if you get papers in your door, that's a building check, uh, just showing that we were there, we tried doors, we tried doors, we did different things, uh, to make sure things were secure. Um, so with the officers that we have right now, again, that's, that's basically, uh, again, seven hundred and ninety-six calls, if anybody would like to see a, a, a printout of, uh, just the calls here, um, with the, the numbers that we were dispatched to, just picking through here. So, the two extra officers would, would definitely benefit us, um, in, in going forward here, uh, and moving on, getting them hired, even in the academy, because you look at six-month term around, um, on, on officers, so if we put somebody in June, we're not getting them full property separate till, till the new year, that actually starts them out, and then there's at least a four- and six-month training period with, with another officer as well. Uh, Officer Blank right now is in this transition, um, he's doing great, um, he's been on for about a month now, so he's, he's with a training officer. Um, but again, basically, the, the numbers are here, we have the data, um, and that's why I wanted to start these control logs, as well as, you know, just showing mileage, what, what, what officers are handling calls. I mean, I, I just seen one officer had, you know, he had handled just the one, a hundred and one calls, which is dope. So you gotta look at, when I look at this, and I'm speaking from, in the officer's perspective, when you dispatch this, kind of, you know, calls, everybody deserves to get their undivided attention. Every individual, every citizen of Summery, no matter whether we're on a call for fifteen minutes with you, they, they need your, you know, undivided attention, and if I was called to your house, or it's called to Jimmy's house, or anybody's house, you know, you want my attention, but that officer's always thinking, what, what do I have coming up next? You know, and I have to go back, I have to do this investigation, this investigation. So the officers are important, um, and I, I just ask Council to really take that, and I know you do, you guys all care for citizens, uh, of, of us having the need for more officers, uh, but look at that, look at this, uh, recruitment, we're wanting to sign officers to, uh, train, you know, look at the rules seriously, and, and look what we can do, or what we have to do, um, to the citizens. Um, and I, I, I don't want to play off the safety aspect like you, um, if you're in a safe environment, you feel safe, you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna work to your full potential. Um, sometimes our officers are one, two officers on the shift, you know, but again, I, I spoke enough about that, I just ask you to, to help us out on that. As we're in discussions here, uh, again, I've been meeting with, uh, with different off, different departments, uh, since I've taken to you here, and I know I spoke with John, uh, I would like to discuss actually something, uh, openly here, with everyone is looking at putting an impound yard, uh, or an impound facility at, at the department, um, fencing in an area, probably the police department, uh, it wouldn't, I don't think we'd pick much, it would be fencing, but also looking at, uh, collection, I spoke with Rachel Lee, the, um, veteran, the magistrate, uh, we're going to start doing more roundups. We were looking at AOPC warrants, which are summary warrants for, like, parking tickets and things like that. Uh, there's many, many people that have twenty, thirty, you know, tickets out there that the city hasn't been able to recruit one. So in talking with, uh, Councilman Barnhart and, and Code, uh, came up with something, you know, maybe once somebody exceeds, you know, five to ten tickets, you know, we go and we put a boot on the vehicle. Uh, from boot on the vehicle, we look at the legalities of how long that boot can stay on the vehicle till they pay it, if they don't pay it, we impound it, we impound it at our facility. Um, is there a charge for that impound? What's that look like? Just thinking of things for discussion tonight, um, as well as, uh, with, with the impound yard and, and things like that, um, we could also do with Code, when they impound vehicles on administrative warrants, taking junk abandoned vehicles, taking them, impound them at the police department, as well in this gated area. There's a good area to the left, uh, in our parking area, it's on by the city, uh, we don't see many vehicles parking there. There's also some open, open spots, but let's just fence in like a twenty-car area that we can put twenty cars into. State police have the same thing as Tony, kind of a parish, you'll see them, they have the, uh, the fenced yard with the barbed wire. Um, also, we look at, uh, contract with a, you know, towing service, you know, who would we contract, uh, contract with them, but they're all things that we can discuss, I just wanted to lay it out there tonight, and the legality of it, and things like that, you'll, you can take a look at that as well. With some of these other things, uh, I was going over, I wanted to go over just a, a little bit about the equipment, um, was looking at upgrading our equipment, um, it's, it's just a discussion issue, just so you know what's coming down the pipe. Um, basically, uh, our tasers, uh, contract went out, uh, beginning of this year, actually, they usually have a five-year contract with them. Tasers are looking, uh, the cost, I just priced them out, just to, to see what we were looking at, uh, for six gators, we're looking at about thirteen thousand dollars. Um, and this leads me into my other talk, was with talking about grants, you know, we need to find some grants, you know, who, who do we go through for these, you know, different grants for equipment and things like that, there's grants out there, there's lots of grants, but I really want, uh, maybe if there's somebody, you know, besides Derek that can, can help us with these grants, um, in, in finding and locating, and we'll be trying to get money for the city, um, because that definitely puts a burden on the taxpayer. Um, I know we're looking at, uh, just for discussion purposes, the, uh, upgrade of the computer system, that's fifteen thousand dollars, the, I, I looked at with him for that. Vests, uh, are going to be coming up, a vest goes for about thirteen hundred dollars. So all things that we have to look at, and I started already my budget for, for September, October, not things that we have to purchase right now, but things that we, I like to be ahead of the game, um, but just bringing it up for discussion, as well as our shotguns, that was another thing that are gonna need to be replaced, they're about twelve, fifteen years old, they get rusty, you know, we, you know, we'll look at third, those two of the shotguns as well. Um, so in the next few months, um, I'll be putting, plucking the data, and the, you know, doing the analysis, and, and giving you guys, uh, different, uh, things that we really need to look at for the new year, nothing that's immediate, but if we start planning for it now, um, down the road, we're not, we're not scurrying, running around for it, so even, uh, speaking with the chief and Williamsport, uh, up there, um, they're, they're a whole new group up there, they have what's called a five-year plan, um, they'd like to sit down with somebody as well, um, and, and talk about, you know, what it's, it's to be a five-year plan for the police department, um, as well, follow over with the other departments that we have to say as well. But I think it's very important that we start looking at this now, then all of a sudden, oh, we need shotguns, we need tasers, oh, we're really gonna do scurrying around, um, but start implementing this, this, these types of plans and, and looking forward, so over the next few months, I'm gonna start putting this together, um, and just forwarding it to you for these meetings and things like that, um, as well as one through the ports, um, as you can see, I, I have everything here late half of the night, but, um, I'm gonna do a, every two weeks, just set something off, so you guys can see what exactly the police departments are doing, and what, you know, what being transparent, and just having a local line of communication, I think it's very, 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 very important, uh, with this department, variable, Council, to see you guys know, I, I don't know what the disconnect is, I'm, you know, I'm a pastor with the board, so, uh, with what's, we're moving forward with is, is some good things, and just, uh, as I propose them, just take a good look at them, and we'll, we'll move forward from there, but, um, with some of these things, I just want to let you know that, you know, these things are coming through, and over the next year, year and a half. So, um, as well as with the officers and stuff like that, um, we, we need a couple officers.
Chief, I want to thank you for the job, the turnaround, in a short period of time, I know the budget you're living with now, Alden presented a quick way for those items he's mentioned.
No, that's why we want to be more proactive, so as he says, like, oh man, we need X dollars.
So I think you should put your list together.
And we'll take out the parking racks.
And, uh, I'll buy you the first, uh, no.
Steve will.
Sorry, uh, easy stuff first, I'm working way down line, but, uh, I've heard a lot of compliments on the street, you've given us more information than we had in the last six years, and, uh, you're on a hell of a job.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Some of that stuff, the chief's talking, like the boots, uh, I don't, like, budget, so.
Mike, you sure about that?
What? I'm sorry.
The boots, the boots, when we get the boots out of, we have money there for them, right?
I think we like that, you said, if they were discussion, we put it together.
Yeah, it's one of those things, being proactive, trying to, planning for it ahead of time. All right, announcements, there are a few announcements, accepting letters of interest for one open spot on the Harb, uh, must be licensed contractor, uh, this one here, this one is new, accepting letters of interest for seven open spots for the nuisance abatement board of appeals, there must be one city executive, one city councilperson, one police officer, two business owners, and two Summery citizens. Uh, the mayor's office will be closed on February sixteenth, uh, for training, training, Robin and Jeff will be down in Harrisburg for two days of training, Friday, and then Saturday. Uh, next city council meeting will be February twenty-sixth, here at six fifteen. Um, the open seat for city council replacement will be announced at the next council meeting on the twenty-sixth. Uh, Electronic Recycling Day will be April twentieth, from ten to twelve, at the city's skating rink parking lot. Uh, Coffee Courageous for Watson Wish Foundation will take place on April twentieth at the train station. Cameron Park and Front Street Cleanup will be April twenty-second at nine AM. Uh, the Summery Summer kickoff will be June eighth at the Riverfront. Uh, two convention, Inc. Rink will take place June eighth through the, excuse me, seventh through the ninth at the ice rink. Now, at this time, is there any public comment at this, oh?
What is it? I'm sorry, I, yeah, I didn't, I, the police department, uh, within, in, uh, coordination with, uh, Goodwill's fire department, uh, I apologize if I didn't announce you.
Nope, it's okay.
Uh, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, here, um, we're, we're looking to, the police department is looking, uh, to basically put an Easter egg on together. Uh, we're looking to, we could, uh, use the, the ball fields, I know I have to put paperwork in for that as well, uh, but March twenty-third, we'd like to do that, uh, as well as, uh, opening it up to, um, disabled, uh, individuals as well, um, looking for cones that we can set the eggs on, uh, for the dis, uh, disabled individuals that can go through and, and get the egg off. The police department, uh, everybody that talks, and we really like to do something like that, um, so we're working with, uh, in communication with the, uh, Goodwill, but I want to make that announcement, March twenty-third flyer is to start coming out, uh, I'll put in for the ball fields.
Yeah, get, get with Jeff, we'll get him, well, he'll be, the ball field's up at the northern town.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, get with Jeff, we'll get that paperwork in, get it, uh, Jim will sign it, and then on there, send what you need, you can put on there wherever you need it.
Okay.
Now, Chief, will you be dressed up in a bunny outfit?
The possibility.
Uh, is there any public comment at this time? Please state your name, ma'am.
Julie Burgess, not to be confused with Josh Rogers, your last name. Um, the first two announcements, when is the closing date on those?
A closing date on what, I'm sorry?
The first two announcements.
I'm on the name.
Oh. Until they are filled.
Oh, oh.
I mean, until they're, like I said, until all the positions are, until all the spots are filled, it'll remain open.
Okay, and on the twenty-sixth, um, the SRI meeting and the council meeting at five o'clock?
Oh, yeah, that'll be prior to, yes.
Any information on that?
All it is, is a meeting with SRI, uh, they requested a meeting with the city, uh, on prior to one of the council meetings, that was the next available date, so that will be here at five o'clock.
Thank you.
Yes, it's public, that was advertised. Is that it, Julie?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Please state your name, sir.
Uh, I'm Derek Hayes, I'm here basically representing the Summery Skate Park. I'd like to formally start with thanking Joel for helping us open the nonprofit and transferring the money that we got to the city, uh, to start something that we can approach other vendors and other places in the area to, uh, ask for donations, as soon as that's finalized, which I'd like to speak with him about after, um, how those things work, and, uh, how we can go to places and, and ask for donations. Uh, one of our members came up with kind of a guideline, that I have a couple of sheets that I can give you guys to look at, excuse me, as well, that just has, you know, general things that we need to do, uh, to get the skate park rolling, planning, design, construction, uh, all those things have to come into line for us to be able to get it done, uh, we have to approach different contractors and see who can give us the best bid, and all that starts with having money. Uh, I also would like to ask how, you know, how do we, how, what do we do with the money after we get it, which are all those things that we can learn, but I kind of just wanted to put a bugger in there that we don't really know how it works, but we're really gung-ho about having it happen, so the more information that we have and more things that we know to do it the right way, the easier and the better it's gonna be.
I'll hope you.
Thank you.
But honestly, I mean, I, I think I can help you with all of the questions as the process proceeds, and, um, I'll be glad to stay after and talk to you guys, and update you on where we're at.
Okay.
And how the process will work.
Thank you. Um, so that, kind of, then my next question will be the bank and the I M number, which I guess you can answer those questions after as well.
I haven't.
Uh, the lights are still not on at the skate park, I know we discussed it previously, um, there's still just one set on, it kind of makes it hard for anybody that wouldn't like to use it after hours, we all work until four, five o'clock, so if we wanted to enjoy the, you know, the, the recreation of the city, we wouldn't be able to at that point in time, and I know Stewie's is there for it.
He, he pays the bill.
I can't quarter the bill.
I'm not sure, I don't know if it does work, I'm not sure, they'd have to talk with them, so.
Yeah, we're gone on six weeks.
I'm just bringing it up again, being inconsistent, I, I mean, we've talked about it prior to, and I know that, uh, I know the guy that was here with us, say, he, well, he no longer comes with us, so now it's up to us to, uh, speak with you guys about having that. I don't have key, Jeremy Lauer was supposedly having a key, but he no longer comes with us, so I would either have to speak with him about getting it from him, or I didn't know what the allowance was on that, because he may have been given it by you guys, is it signed out to him, is there a physical record that he has this key? You know, uh, those are all kinds of questions.
Ask Jeremy for the key, and if he says he won't do it, back to yourself, uh, get ahold of me, and I'll track Jeremy down and get the key. Ask Jeremy for the key, and if he says he won't do it back to yourself, uh, get ahold of me, and I'll track Jeremy down and get the key.
Okay.
Mark?
I don't think it needs to go that far.
What we'll do, we'll get you guys the key, okay? Then we'll go up and open the panel box up and show you, it's just a bunch of breakers, okay? And, uh, we'll do it that way. That way, you guys can manage if there's the lights out.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would be great if you're willing to let us do that, but I didn't know what was allowed of us as, as, uh.
And that's free kind of pony street balls, and that's that up too. Because they get in there and turn their lights on in that same box.
That would be something that we deal with throughout that, that period of time. But right now, I would just like to start with knowing how to turn them on so that the people of the city can utilize the, the recreation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
You can hold Jeremy, we'll go from there.
I just text him.
Tell him want the key or try us in any way.
I'm not going that far. I just text him and ask him if he has a key.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more thing. Uh, I saw you guys are all very adamant about this subject, and it's the essential worker policy. I don't work for the city. I don't have anything to do with it. But my personal opinion is if someone is an essential worker and they're forced to come in and a non-essential worker is allowed to stay home, that person needs to be paid more if the person at home is getting paid. And that's kind of my, that's just my opinion. I don't, I know you have a different opinion about it, but I just think that if you're gonna tell somebody they're essential and they have to come in and a non-essential person doesn't, I get that there's an essential stamp on that, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that person should get paid. They're getting paid to do nothing while there's a person getting paid here to do something for the city. So if that person's not doing anything, they should have to use their own time, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? All right, Dr. Smith, you guys want me downstairs quick?